Good afternoon. I will call to order the August 13th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as president of the commission. I'm joined today by commissioners Ellison, Kronzer, Magrino, Schrader, Lukey Pier, Sweezy, and Rockwell. At this time, I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices and we can get started with our meeting. Commissioner Coleman is also here, for the record. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the July 30th meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions?
So move on.
We have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item is to approve the agenda. We'll sort through the agenda, determine which items will be considered on consent, which will be discussed, and which will be continued to another meeting. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. So, starting at the top, item one is the gas and snack tobacco store at 640 East Lake Street. That is a conditional use permit for a shopping center. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one. I'll put item one on consent. Item two is the cup foods tobacco shop at 3759 Chicago Avenue South. That's a conditional use permit for a shopping center as well. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? See, no one will put item two on consent. Item three is Mosaic Phase Three at 1320 Lagoon Avenue, 1350 Lagoon Avenue, and 2900 Fremont Avenue South. Conditional use permit for a planned unit development related to signs. We'll continue that item to the August 27th meeting if anyone is here for that. Item four is a vehicle storage facility at 345 Industrial Boulevard. That's a conditional use permit for outdoor storage, vehicle rental, and site plan review. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one will put item four on consent. Item five is the Minneapolis impound facility at 50 DuPont Avenue North and 100 Irving Avenue North. Several applications for an impound facility. We'll discuss item five if anyone is here for that. Commissioner Rockwell had a question about that. Item six is the Marshall Apartments at 1625 Marshall Street Northeast. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? So, we have someone here for item six, we can discuss that. Also, item seven, next door, the Marshall Apartments at 1627 Marshall Street Northeast. Several applications for residential building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? We have at least one speaker, so we can take six and seven together. Item eight is the OXOP Gallery and Residences at 1107 through 1111 Washington Avenue South, 1100 Third Street South. Variance and site plan review for a new mixed-use building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item eight? See, no one will put item eight on consent. Item nine is the Seventh and Portland Mixed Use Development at 500, 512, and 528 Seventh Street South. That application has been withdrawn, so if anyone is here, we'll not be considering that. Item 10 is Oaks Mini-Ha-Ha at 5310, 1822, 2630, 34, and 38 Mini-Ha-Ha Avenue, 5329 48th Avenue South. Three applications for a new residential building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 10? See, no one will put item 10 on consent. Item 11 is Oaks Long Follow-up, 5363, 67, and 71 Mini-Ha-Ha Avenue, and 4912 East 54th Street. Several applications for a new mixed-use building at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item 11? So, we do have someone here for that, we can discuss item 11. And finally, item 12 is a zoning code text amendment, and that item will be continued indefinitely, so we will not discuss that today. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, four, eight, and 10 will be on consent. We'll discuss items five, six, seven, and 11. Item three will be continued to August 27th, and item 12 will be continued indefinitely. Also, item nine has been withdrawn. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. We have no committee of the whole consent agenda today, so next may have a motion to continue item three to the August 27th meeting. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. That motion carries. Next may have a motion to continue item 12 indefinitely. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. That motion carries. Next may have a motion to accept the withdrawal of item nine. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items one, two, four, eight, and 10. Is anyone here to speak on any of those items? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, and commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with item five, the Minneapolis impound facility, and staff is Ms. Wibmeyer. Commissioner Rockwell, I know you had a question about this. Is there anything in particular you would like staff to address?
You know, my question, or my concern is that the alternative compliance for tree spacing, so I think if you could just, in the actual impound lots themselves, you could just kind of go over what the requirements are and what the total number of trees that would be required are and what are being provided, and then how that number intersects with the spacing and how that is or is not being complied with.
All right. So, landscaping plan, so I tried to, hopefully this is visible, but I tried to consolidate the landscaping plans all into one since this is such a big, long site. Let me find the total tree numbers. So, the total tree requirement is 536 trees. The total proposed is 545, and that is a combination of existing trees and proposed. So, let's see here. I know I had it noted somewhere in the staff report, the breakup of it, sorry. Thought I had it written here. There you go. So, there are 451 existing trees, and so the applicant did go out to the site and did like a survey of it and only included trees, like not scrub invasive species, but actual trees, and that's noted on the site plan. So, 451 are those existing trees, and then 94 are new onsite, and 35 would be located in the public right-of-way. And that actually totals 537, so onsite there's 554 trees, and some are additional trees are located in the public right-of-way. So, with the spacing requirement, all of the parking spaces in the public parking lot and the staff parking lot are within 50 feet of an onsite tree. Areas that are not within 50 feet of an onsite tree would be the drop-off area in front of the building, and staff is recommending that they comply with that requirement. But then, most of those, most of the storage areas, so anywhere where you are with over 50 feet from these landscaped areas that are shown, so that's most of this storage area on the east side of Van White, as well as most of the area on west side of Van White. You do have some tree stands here in the center, and then along the southern border there's a stand of trees there as well, but pretty much that sliver, as you go across east to west, is not within 50 feet.
All right. Any further questions of staff?
No.
Commissioner Rockwell? No further questions. Doesn't look like anyone else has questions either, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. I don't know if the applicant has anything further to add to Janelle's presentation. If not, we can do one more check. Is anyone else here for item five? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we have the three applications before us. Would anyone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
Actually, a quick question for the applicant. So, you know, it's stated in the staff report that there is a security concern with trees in the impound lots. My concern is the heat island effect of not having trees in those lots, but it strikes me that the security concern is really a budget concern, right? I mean, if we had unlimited budget, we could, as I sent to Janelle earlier today, we could hire a security guard per tree, and it would be very secure. So, somewhere between that and our current security budget-wise, a practical way of managing security onsite. I'm just wondering if you could speak to what those concerns are and sort of what that trade-off is.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners and Chair, my name is Robert Frittel. I'm Director of Design and Construction for Property Services for City Properties, and worked with clever architects and SRF engineers on the architectural and civil and landscape design in this project very closely, along with our security manager, R. Thomas, in property services. Security at this site is provided through a variety of means. We have a secure fence perimeter. We have cameras stationed throughout the site, and we have patrolling security guards. It's a roughly 19-acre site, of which about 12 acres is impounded cars, and so it's quite a large area to provide security for. The cars that are here are a mix of cars that are not worth much and cars that are worth a lot, and over 600 police impound cars right now, which are cars that are impounded for police investigations, so they might have been involved in accidents that might be serious. They might have been involved in drug busts or other things like that. We have regular attempts at breaching the security by people who are looking to gain access to these vehicles for a wide variety of reasons, day and night. And so, we have a kind of complete security protocol, and a lot of it requires visual access to the cars and the spaces between the cars. So, trees within the lot every 100 feet or so impede the views of our cameras, and obviously that the camera views can be overcome as a budgetary concern by adding more poles and more cameras, more monitors, and more people to monitor the situation. But we're trying to provide a balance of effective service to the public and security for Minneapolis Police Department and State Patrol, who we also store vehicles for. So...
Thank you.
We also would request exceptions in this area due to other mitigating factors. One thing we've done is we've concentrated the required amount of landscaping on the public sides to help screen the view, and so we're contributing to dissipating the heat island effect by meeting the tree requirement. We're just not placing it as sporadically as the code requires. We also would like to have the flexibility for plowing and car storage and access to these spaces by tow trucks, so maximum flexibility is very important for the efficient operation of this facility.
Great, thanks.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell?
I can start things off with a motion and explain a little more if I have a second. I will move approval of items A and B, the non-conforming use expansion and the variance with the one stated condition under the variance.
We have a motion and a second to approve items A and B, the non-conforming use expansion and variance with one stated condition. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
8-0.
Motion carries. Commissioner Rockwell, item C.
I will move approval of item C with the seven, or with the six stated conditions, adding a seventh, that each parking space should be located within 50 feet of the center of a deciduous tree within the entire site.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve item C, the site plan review with the six stated conditions, adding a seventh condition that each parking space is located within 50 feet of a deciduous tree. We can see if there's a second, and then Mr. Whittemore.
Commissioners, just for the sake of clarity on this, we should probably make sure we're all on the same page about whether all vehicle storage on the site is what you're considering to be parking. Just again, for the sake of clarity, all parking spaces and vehicle storage spaces is the intent?
That's the intent, correct. What are effectively operationally surface parking lots, although cars are not necessarily in stalls.
All right. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Kronzer?
Question for that. So, the parking surface of the storage areas, is that asphalt or is that a classified material?
We're paying very close attention to runoff and infiltration of water and treating all of the stormwater in the retention pond at the northeast end of the east site.
And then, Commissioner Sweezy, then Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you. I'll be voting no on the motion because of the addition of the seventh condition. I found very persuasive the arguments, or the statements regarding the need for security in that parking lot and the need to see it, I think sometimes, and I think actually that the city has done a good job of trying to compensate for the fact that the trees can't go exactly maybe where they should by code. What gets my attention particularly is the integrity of evidence seized by the Minneapolis Police Department and the State Patrol. Most evidence in cases is kept securely at the police department, and cars, obviously we can't do that for, and cars have to be parked somewhere, and they have to be in spaces. And they have to be in spaces where they are as secure to the best we can do it as if they were in a locked vault at a police department. And I think that they do have to be seen and be able to be seen 24 hours a day for that purpose, so I won't be able to support the motion to approve the site plan with that condition.
Commissioner Schrader?
Actually, my question runs along the same line. I wanted to question for staff if there's another way to get to Commissioner Rockwell's, you know, stated goal. I very much share that goal, but we do have kind of the balance of added expense as well as being able to kind of maintain sites, so I don't know if there's a way to do this through compliance with shrubs or other ways.
Commissioner Rockwell?
If I can just expand a little bit on the sort of the stated intent of the motion, since it's referenced, you know, I think that having the number of trees, the right number of trees, and in fact more trees, is great, and having landscaping and stormwater management is great as well, and I sort of did a gut check today, am I, like, how much does tree cover with the distribution over a site matter? And, you know, the cooperative extension, which is all land-grant universities' extensions combined together, pulled a lit review where, you know, in summer's afternoons, temperature difference between shaded and non-shaded ground can be as much as 36 degrees Fahrenheit, and the ground then holds that temperature and releases that at night, making that neighborhood a hotter neighborhood. And so, you know, I think the intent of the motion is to be really respectful of that heat island specifically, and not just the number of trees, which I'm glad to see that you have worked on a bit. And, you know, in the initial, the applicant's initial testimony, you know, sounded like security was a budgetary issue, not to Commissioner Sweezy's question, you know, if we add more cameras and poles, that we can achieve the same level of security and the same eyes, and we and the planning commission are not in charge of the budget, and we're not allowed to consider financial considerations, and if it's a budgetary consideration, you know, my feeling is we should hold the line.
All right. And staff? I guess maybe if... Commissioner Schrader, I don't know.
I think I got clear.
Okay, you have a little more clarity. Commissioner Lukey Pier?
I have a question for applicant. So, not that I need you to like explain on the public record exactly where the vehicles stored as evidence are stored as opposed to people who are parked illegally in a small emergency, but is it a situation where perhaps not all 12 acres need to be devoid of trees? Is there a place where we can find balance where maybe a portion of the lot could at least have some deciduous trees? I mean, is there an opportunity to maybe find compromise where we can, you know, half of the lot is every 50 feet, and then this sacred part that needs to be protected for evidence sake, which I found a very compelling point, can still have direct sightlines and 24/7 surveillance and all the other good things?
It's possible, the staff, Public Works, and the impound facility prefers to have the greatest flexibility as possible with the location of the impounded, of the police-holed vehicles in particular, and they're generally kept closer to the police forensic building, but they don't, the number of them goes up and down over time, and so they can't have a separate area that's more secure for those, for one. There is, it's a very, very large site, and as I said, we've concentrated the new landscaping in areas that screen views from public right-of-ways. If I could just maybe digress for a second and come back to you and back to Commissioner Rockwell's comments, the exceptions that are allowed also allow for the site plan to be consistent with the character of the surrounding area. So, I'll note that to the north is a bus facility with bus storage parking lots. To the east is a power substation. To the south is a railroad right-of-way. All along the south property line, there is vegetation, including especially to the, in the west area, there's a large woods. To the north of the west area, there's a tremendous amount of existing vegetation too. We're not anywhere near a residential area at this time, and...
So, can I quick, can I quick just interject for a second and say, so for example, if Commissioner Rockwell's condition number seven was applied to a certain percentage of, like, I'm assuming that 50% of the site isn't evidence storage, but like, let's just say we were super conservative in our number, and we said, you know, a third of this parkage, park area has to have a tree within 50 feet of where it is, and then the other two-thirds will give you, I mean, is this something that's doable, or is it a situation where there's evidence all over the crazy place?
I think, I think that I could say that it's doable. I think the idea that the area west of Van White is an overflow area that's primarily going to be used during spring and fall sweeps and winter snow emergencies, that area then other parts of the year may not be used much at all, and so that's an area that could potentially see a little more vegetation within the parking area.
Great, great, because I think that would maybe be an opportunity for both means to be achieved, where we're not having a heat island effect given this large size of the lot, but also where we're not, you know, impeding justice. So, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
I want to go back to the numbers that staff provided earlier because my concern goes to this additional condition potentially leading to impin, going to the number of existing trees. If I understood correctly, there are a large percentage of existing trees relative to the maximum number required, and that only 94 are new that are proposed. So, would this condition essentially cause all of those 94 to be in the impound lot area? And then, if it does, then we lose some of the landscaping, that the screening, the human-centric effects of the trees because they're near the, where people are going to be.
Before Janelle speaks, that could, that could be the case a little bit. I also wanted to point out, we do have this large retention pond that has rain garden-type plantings that don't qualify towards our landscaping. They're not considered shrubs, they're not considered trees under the particular landscape zoning requirements, so we have a very large landscaped area in the northwest corner of the site that's not helping us meet the minimum requirements.
And I'll also note that the landscaping that is proposed and where it's located is also tied to other alternative compliance requests, such as the shrub requirement, reducing that, and the building placement, so it would, you know, you'd have to come up with different reasons for approving alternative compliance for those standards if the landscaping were drastically changed.
Commissioner Rockwell? Commissioner Coleman, where you finish?
Do you have a follow-up?
Okay.
You know, I was just going to respond also sort of more broadly, and it's a point I've made before, you know, that these tree numbers here in the code, these are minimums, and that, you know, with these city projects, I know, of course, that there are budgetary concerns, and I pay taxes, and I get it, but I just think that we should be setting the standard on projects that are city projects, and so I find it continually frustrating when we have to wonder whether we're going to lose six trees from near the building by putting them over in a parking lot when we should be doing that because it's the right thing to do to begin with, and this is the city, and we're a city body, and we should be setting the standards, and so I just wanted to express that, and I'm done.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. So, I am conflicted on the additional condition, and it's primarily budgeting, and I'm wondering if there would be any support for phasing in of the tree requirements so that budget considerations could be better addressed, so over a period of time rather than immediately upon development.
I guess I would, I would certainly entertain that amendment, but I don't have a clear understanding of our authority temporarily. Mr. Whittemore, do you?
Yeah, Mr. Whittemore, then Commissioner Kronzer.
Commissioners, that's a good question. Typically, we expect that all site improvements are implemented within two years of planning commission's action, however, I think you'd have the ability to have a phased implementation in a situation like this that goes beyond that two-year period.
Yeah, a question for applicant. My understanding is the budget implications really for additional cameras and poles and maybe security infrastructure, not the cost of the trees themselves? maybe security infrastructure, not the cost of the trees themselves. Can you speak to that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional poles and cameras would be an additional cost consideration. I guess the question is, would we be moving trees that we currently have meeting the minimum requirement for the site to a location that meets the requirement for distance from parking spaces? Or would we be adding trees? And I guess the board would have to, or the commission would have to direct us to exceed the minimum requirements for landscaping to add trees that we're already exceeding a little bit, but we would want clarification from the commission on that.
Right. And Commissioner Lupe here.
So, just a couple of things that I'm trying to get clarity on here. So, it seems to me, given how different funding mechanisms work for civic projects, that delaying the planting of trees, is that necessarily going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back on this? Or is it the sort of thing where we delay it, you get an extra year? It really, it actually makes the funding more difficult because all of a sudden it's not tied into the same package? I mean, is this going to even matter? I mean, or is it, does it really just come down to trees or no trees, period? Because I have to tell you, I'm a little bit like, you know, given how different things work when it comes to public funding, it seems like sometimes delaying things means it has to come out of a future pot of money that has to be allocated. So, I mean, is that really, if we delayed it and added another year, is that gonna solve all the budgetary woes? Or are we just creating a new hurdle that we have to jump over? Because I, I'm inclined to think it's the latter of the two.
All right. So, I'll have to answer that in two parts. One would be with Commissioner Rockwell's amendment, which would require the relocation or addition of trees within 50 feet of every parking space, which would require a, a number of additional poles and cameras, presumably. We also have lighting that has to be considered and how the trees might obstruct the lighting. So, to come back and do that later will be an inconvenience in a number of ways. It's a secure lot, so bringing in contractors to do that kind of work later and moving cars around to make room for them is an inconvenience. And everything we postpone costs us more later just because of the natural escalation of construction materials and cost and, and doing it as a separate project rather than having the efficiencies of one project. So, if we were to do a scaled back compromise where we were just doing the, some additional trees in the area west of Van White, for example, it would be, it would have much less impact. From a budget standpoint, I'm not sure, you generally don't look at our project budgets and, and take that into consideration. But we've been working with a budget that's grown considerably over the design period since we moved the building from where it is now at the east side of the site to the west side of the site where the land is more polluted. We've had to drive filings deeper and, and restore more land there in order to get access to Van White and be closer to the LRT. And so, but I can't really speak
Okay, that's, I think you answered it pretty well.
As far as, you know, what the straw is that breaks their back.
And then just some clarity from Janelle, because I interpreted your answer earlier to mean that if it meant diverting trees from the existing proposed planting or landscape plan to fill in this lot, that that would actually trigger other alternative compliance needs. So, in fact, the, if we made the, the motion with the seventh condition, it would be in addition to what is currently in front of us. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just wanted some double checking that.
All right. Any further discussion? We have Commissioner Lupe here.
So, I guess I'd like to ask Commissioner Rockwell if he'd be willing to amend his seventh condition to represent a certain percentage of the parked area as opposed to 100% of the parking stalls needing to comply with the 50-foot radius requirement?
Do you have a percent?
I have no idea how many vehicles. I don't know whether 50% is reasonable, whether 30% allows them to have sight through drive aisles. I, I don't know. If you have a number you want to propose, a percentage, or if you just want to say the area to the west of, you know, the overflow parking. But it seems as though we might actually be able to achieve a compromise that works for everyone if we come up with a number.
Just for clarity, that, I guess that would be our preference to just say the area west of Van White. Just so you know, the area east of Van White holds roughly 550 cars. The area west of Van White holds 350 to 400, so.
Oh, that's helpful.
That's it.
Yeah, I would entertain that. Which amendment would you like to make?
And I will, I would like to propose an amendment that the area to the west of Van White will comply with condition seven, and the area to the east will remain as currently shown on the landscape plan, in regard to, specifically to condition seven.
I'll second that.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to amend the proposed condition number seven, that each parking space is located no more than 50 feet from a deciduous tree in the area west of Van White Boulevard. So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? We can just add that, make that amendment on a voice vote. So, all in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. So, we can go back to our original motion, which is to approve item C, the site plan review with the six stated conditions and adding the seventh that we just considered in an amendment. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Squeezey?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item five. Our next items for discussion are items six and seven, which we can take together, 1625 and 1627 Marshall Street Northeast. Staff is Ms. Rouse. Maybe we could just have a brief presentation on this one.
Item six and seven are 1625 Marshall Street Northeast and 1627 Marshall Street Northeast. They're located just north of the railroad tracks on the east side of Marshall Street, which is a community corridor, an aerial image here just east of the river. And currently, the site has, the northern parcel has a single-family dwelling and the southern parcel just has a garage on it, shared driveway down the middle. They would be demolished to make way for two four-unit buildings, one on the north side, one on the south side. Again, a shared driveway. There'd be three surface parking stalls on the northern lot and one garage with bike parking on the interior. And then the southern would have three parking stalls, surface parking stalls behind the They would be three-unit buildings, so there's a conditional use permit to increase the height from two and a half stories to three stories. Rendered images showing the structures, both of them need to be rezoned from R2B to R3 to allow the four-unit buildings, as I mentioned, the increase in height variance on the front yard setback for the buildings. The established setback is actually 30 feet because of the building north of 1627. And so, it'd go down to 15.5 to 17.5 because of the angled front lot line, and then to 9.4 to, and 11.5 for the second-story balcony. The applicant submitted shadow studies showing that the increase from two and a half to three stories would be pretty negligible in difference on shadowing, and it'd mainly just be during the winter months. And then the two additional applications would be for 1625, and it's to allow an increase in purview services from 60% to 65.5%. And then to reduce the interior side yard setbacks, so that's the southern setback along the railroad property, which is vacant, to go from nine feet to five feet, three inches. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. And commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing for both items six and seven. We can see if the applicant would like to add anything to the staff presentation first. And if so, please come to the microphone and say your name and address for the record.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission here. My name is Mark Kevaskevich. I'm one of the owners of properties. We recently just closed on these properties. And I am also a resident of Northeast, a lifelong resident. And we're very excited to have this project here. I just want to let you know I am present if there are any questions.
All right. And are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none. We can move on to any other speakers. I know we have at least one speaker, so you can come to the microphone, say your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Chee, and we occupy the house just to the north of the proposed project. And the proposal is to change the zoning from two-family, two parcels, two-family to a multi-family zone. And if you look at the plans, there are two buildings, four units per building. And, you know, there, looks like in the upper floors, they have four bedrooms and three baths in the whole unit. So, you know, if you go, so it's a total of eight units, four in each building, times total of eight bedrooms, that's 64 people per bedroom. You put one per bedroom, and then if there's two per bedroom, that's 128 people in this small little area. Now, the Planning Commission said that, well, this Marshall Street is what's called a community corridor. And because this is a community corridor, that justifies going from a, only can have two-family to this big multi-family difference. But, you know, Marshall Avenue is a very, it is a very busy corridor, that's correct, but it's actually the East River Road to Minneapolis. So, if you think about it, if you were on the West River Road in South Minneapolis or the East River Road in St. Paul, I don't think anyone would think, let's have this a community corridor like Lexington Avenue or Industrial Boulevard, which would be a reason to justify changing zoning from where there'd only be two families per parcel to now there's going to be almost triple that. And the justification for that is, well, this is a busy corridor, but, you know, like for instance, just kitty-corner from us, the park board was looking at a year and a half ago, putting a truck garage in one of those vacant buildings. And because it was the East River Road on the Mississippi River, they decided not to do that, and they're, and they're acquiring the property to tear all of it down so that can be park ground property across from Marshall there on the Mississippi Riverside. And it just doesn't seem like it would make sense to me that you would want to increase substantially the density in that area if it's going to be park board and park view stuff on, on the other side of the river. So, 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 so that didn't seem to me to make sense. And that was the recommendation, that because this was a community, a busy corridor, that you can put more density in there. And then the study says, well, two and a half blocks south of there, there's a three-story building, so that justifies putting in this three-story building or three-and-a-half-story building in an area that has totally just one-and-a-half stories, two-story buildings. And another thing about the plan is, it's a beautiful design. It looks like a beautiful plan, it's just, in my mind, the wrong lot to put it on. But in addition to having the three stories, they're also proposing that there be basically a patio on, on what would be the fourth story, which would really, you know, if you closed that in, it would be then a four-story building, not a three-story building. There are little balconies for the, each unit already on the first and the second, but then they want to put this balcony on the, on the, what's basically a fourth floor. So, now you're way up over all of the existing. And of course, you get those people looking down, not just from their windows, but from the whole, almost a fourth story. So, that didn't really seem to make sense. I noticed, you know, and the plan is a nice plan, I just think it's the wrong piece of You'll see in the back where they're having the parking, and of course, there's only eight, I guess they only need eight units, but there's 11 parking stalls for what potentially could be, if you do the math, if you put two people in a bedroom, which sounds kind of reasonable, these have four-bedroom units in them. You know, that's 128 people with eight cars or 11 cars, you know, two and a half to right. Way over in Second Street and 17th, there's a, there's a bus line, but that's two and a half blocks away. That's not right next to it or right outside. So, I think, you know, I really question that, but, but like in the back on the ground they'll put, they recognize it would be, it would be appropriate to put a privacy fence between our property and their property. But up on the, on this patio, up on the very top, which I think is basically a fourth floor, there's no privacy fence up there, it's just open fencing where it does really look over on us. And it's not really three stories, it's really almost four stories when you think about it. And, and, you know, that's a lot different than all these one-and-a-half, two-story buildings that are around it.
You've been going on a little while, so I might ask you to wrap up.
Okay. And then, I don't know, this is kind of like a legal question I was wondering about. My uncle owned the property before we bought it. In the 1980s or 1990s, the current owner then needed an easement to get a refinancing, and he gave it to him. So, you know, does that, now they're proposing moving the building over, so it's about nine feet or eight, 8.9 feet off of our property. Does that easement go away then, if it's no longer?
You know, that's, I, I don't know if staff has anything to add on that, but I don't, I, I think that's a private easement that's between two property owners, so that at least wouldn't be something that we'd deal with.
So, just to sum it up, I, I just think, you know, it's a beautiful, the pictures are gorgeous, it's, it's well-designed property. It's just that it's really going to put a lot more density in there only because this is what the, the planner says is a community corridor, which can take higher density. But is higher density something we'd want to put on the, on the River Road, the Mississippi River Road? I don't think it would probably be approved in any other, on the West River Road down in South Minneapolis or the East River Road in St. Paul. So, that's my comment.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we can take item six first. We have several applications there. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Starting with item A, the rezoning. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I have a question for the applicant. The bedroom numbers were part of the comment from the person that testified, are those accurate?
Bedroom count per unit is four. As far as occupancy in the bedroom, we have a number of properties in the area, and we, I, I can say probably about 12 years I've never seen anyone more than one occupant unless it was a couple per bedroom.
All right. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Starting with item six, the first application is a rezoning from R2B to R3. Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you, President Brown. I'd make a motion to approve staff recommendation to approve the rezoning. Item A.
Motion to approve item A, the rezoning. Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. I'll just add, since we did have a speaker on this, I, I do think the R3 district is certainly I'll just add, since we did have a speaker on this, I do think the R3 district is certainly appropriate on a community corridor. There's R3 zoning fairly close by. There's actually also really a mix of zoning on this corridor, so that really would reflect the existing character of the area. And really, the R3 zoning district doesn't allow a project much more dense than this. This is about at the limit, and I think in general, it's appropriate at this location. So, there is no further discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve item A. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
That motion carries, and Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue along?
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the conditional use permit to allow an increase in height from two and a half stories to three stories, subject to the one stated condition.
We have a motion to approve item B, the conditional use permit for height. Is there a second? Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? There is none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight, or seven zero.
That motion carries, and Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion for the, to approve the three variances, and item C has one stated condition.
Right. We have a motion to approve item C, D, and E with the one stated condition. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
That motion carries, and moving on to item seven. Commissioner Kronzer?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning from RTB to R3 multifamily district.
We have a motion to approve item A, the rezoning, and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer?
Additional use permits with the one stated condition?
Motion to approve item B, the conditional use permit for height with the one stated condition. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
That motion carries, and Commissioner Kronzer, maybe we can take?
Yeah, we'll group these. So, I'd like to make a motion to return variance item C, the variance item E, and the variance item F.
And we have a motion to return items C, E, and F. Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
That motion carries. Finally, Commissioner Kronzer, item D.
Like to make a motion to approve the variance in item D to allow for a reduced front yard setback.
We have a motion and a second to approve item D, the variance for front yard setback. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on items six and seven. Our next item for discussion is item 11, Oaks Longfellow.
Good evening, commissioners. This is the Oaks Longfellow Development located at, or on Minnehaha Avenue and 51st Street. It's on the northeast corner of that intersection, and just south of East 51st Street, you get into the VA Hospital-owned land and other related facilities. There are three variances before you tonight, site plan review, and then a preliminary and final plant. The variances are to increase the FVR from 2.21 to 2.77. The variance to reduce that north interior side yard setback from the required 11 feet to eight feet for three balconies that are located towards the back portion of the development of the building, excuse me. Variance to reduce the astride parking requirement for the commercial use of the building from two spaces down to zero. And then you have site plan review for 68 dwelling units and a 1,400 square feet, square foot, commercial space. That commercial space then is located in the corner, and then your main entrance to the residential building is located not quite mid-block along Minnehaha Avenue. This is that, the site plan for the project. Here's East 54th Street and then Minnehaha Avenue, the alley is back here, and that is how they access the 68 enclosed underground parking spaces. And then just for a visual of what the building would look like, this is your Minnehaha Avenue, and then your 54th Street elevations. We are recommending approval of all applications. They, we, they don't need alternative compliance, but we are recommending that they meet the on-site tree requirement of two. They were proposing one and aren't a mental tree, and we're asking that they provide two canopy trees. And I will stand for any questions.
Okay. And commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, or see if there's anything you'd like to add to staff's presentation. If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, my name is Norm Bjornis. I'm the principal in Oaks Properties LLC, the developer. We're here to answer any questions. This is a project that we'd like to do in continuance with our TOD focus. This would be our, I think, seventh and eighth TOD projects, the fourth and fifth in Minneapolis, and we have three more in Dallas, Fort Worth. The architect is here. We're both here to answer questions if you have them.
Right. And are there any questions of the applicant? Hearing none. We can move on to some other speakers. I know there are at least a couple people here who would like to speak, so you can decide who goes first. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Rick Martin. This is Deb Pike. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing us. We are new to the area, but our concern has to do with the variance of our street parking. As neighbors to this project, we already have a concern about the parking crunch that is there, that exists because of the light rail and the VA Hospital and the other, the other property that's going up by the Oaks right across the way. So the concern is the two spaces to zero spaces for commercial, which will just add to the already congested area.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, we have a total of five applications before us. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Magrino?
I will make a motion to adopt staff findings and approve item A, the variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio.
We have a motion to approve item A, the variance for floor area ratio. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just say generally about the project. You know, this is in a spot that's obviously very close to the Metro Blue Line. It's a good use of a site that's currently vacant. I would, I think I'd set a committee to hold that this probably even could be a little bit larger, but I think this is certainly in keeping with what's already there and is an appropriate development for the spot.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve item A. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Moving along. Commissioner Magrino?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff findings and approve the applications for the variances and items B and C.
And we have a motion and a second to approve items B and C, the two other variances. Commissioner Kronzer?
And since there was some discussion about parking, the, you know, the project is proposing a significant amount of residential parking. The commercial parking is generally pretty short-term, so I don't see this project really impacting the existing parking situation too much.
Any further discussion? And I'll just add, since the requirement would normally be only two spaces, I think it would kind of create an awkward site plan if there were a couple of parking spaces carved out. And I would agree that especially for a small commercial use like this that is really near an LRT station, it would tend to be something that is very locally oriented and, and wouldn't require a lot of vehicular traffic. So, there's no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. And Commissioner Magrino, we have items D and E.
I will make motion to adopt staff findings and approve the applications. Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to adopt staff findings and approve the application for site plan review and for the preliminary and final plat, items D and E, including the five stated conditions in the site plan review.
And we have a motion and a second to approve items D and E, site plan review and preliminary and final plat. Item D has five stated conditions. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 11, also concludes our business for today.